He's biking.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call the city commission meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Want to just take a brief minute to congratulate the NFAA Eastern Yankton Archery Center on another successful world tournament and was excited last night to end the tournament in the USA, getting gold medals in the women's and men's compounds. So it was fun to actually hear our national anthem being played at the end of that tournament. So congratulations to all, thanks to those in the community that stepped forward to volunteer and all the sponsors, because I know it takes a lot to do tournaments, as many know, in town. So a good turnout for that and happy to have that back in town. So with that, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Miner.
Present.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Number two, under routine business, is to approve the minutes of the work session meeting of September 26, 2022, and the regular meeting of September 26, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right. Next is the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, under routine business, is the city manager's report. So I will turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. Couple of things to visit with you about this evening. I do want to point out in your packet an error. You know that monthly you get the salary report in your packet, and in your packet there is a zero balance under wages that come from the cemetery, but that has been corrected now and the salary report reflects correctly. Those were previously put into parks, which is cemetery is part of our parks department, but should be allocated towards cemetery. So Human Resources wanted to point that out. The version that will go into the documented meeting is correct, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, under new business number eight, that will include life insurance and Brittany or Director of Human Resources will be here when you consider that recommendation from our committee. I have to apologize to you, as I mentioned in a previous email, that we bid out our life insurance provider every three years. It has not changed since we've been here. However, I was under the understanding that 2023 was when we were to bid that out, and it was 2022. So I don't know how I lost a whole year, but I did somewhere. So we asked for a one-year quote because we need to move forward with our open enrollment for our benefits. And so what the recommendation will be tonight is to extend that one more year and then go the next, get a three- and five-year cycle, probably of quotes from other individuals. It's okay to do it that way. Insurance is something that we don't have to quote out or bid out under state statute, but we always have. So I just wanted to bring that forward. That was ultimately my mistake, and I apologize for that. This is Fire Safety Week, so I want folks to be thinking about fire prevention. On Wednesday, there's an open house at Fire Station Two that's from 5:30 to 7:30. My understanding is you can get hot dogs and popcorn and lemonade and see the trucks and see the firemen. And Jason, I'm sure you and the rest of the police department will want to make that. You want to, well, we'll see if they can connect you, but we encourage folks to come and participate in that. Reminder for Mayor Moser and Commissioner Mybaum, we have a city-county planning meeting with our friends at Yankton County at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday morning, and they're hosting us there. Lots of questions about Marn Creek and that project. We are beginning to advertise for bids for that project, so we're hoping that we'll have something for you to consider in a number of weeks. On old business number one and two, and new business number one, you are acting as the zoning board of adjustments. Previously, we used to adjourn and reconvene as the zoning board of adjustments and then adjourn again into acting as the commission. Ross is comfortable with us just stating and acknowledging that when you are acting as that zoning board of adjustments. So I'm saying that out loud for the public's and your benefit. I want to talk to you about our December meeting. If you want to pull up your calendars into December and take a look, typically, we do not hold the second meeting on its regular scheduled program in December because it's so close to Christmas. And if we were to do that, we would be doing that December 26, which I believe is going to be an observed holiday for the city of Yankton. So we typically had it the Friday before, but because Christmas falls on a weekend, I'm kind of thinking many of you might be out. So I'm suggesting perhaps noon on either the 22nd or the 21st. 22nd would give us a little more time since we will have a meeting on the 12th, but wanted to see if anyone had any preference or if you know you're going to be gone. We'll leave, you know, 5:00 to conduct business. If I don't hear anything, I'll probably shoot for noon. It would be located here on the 22nd, which is a Thursday. Okay, we'll plan for that, and we yet to be told if we have anything going on in community development. Sometimes we get some extra Christmas food afterwards. While you're looking at December, take a gander at the 2nd of December. That's the city Christmas party that you'll be invited to. We have a work session scheduled for October 24, which is our next meeting at 6:00 p.m. My intention would be to take a look at our strategic plan. That was a year ago already that we worked on that together. So that's my intention unless there's topics that folks have that they feel are more pressing. I know we have a lot of things to talk about, but as I was looking this morning at my strategic plan, which I try to do every Monday morning, I thought, you know, we have a lot of things here that lots has happened since we started the year, since we started our strategic plan. It might be nice to have a dialogue, give you all an update, and let you ask some questions. I think we have at least an hour of content there, so we'll plan for that unless I hear something otherwise. Some of you ordered shirts, so they were delivered to you here before this evening with the city of Yankton logo. If you don't like your size or something isn't right, please let us know, and our office will get it corrected. I think that's all I have, Mayor, unless the commission has questions for me.
Amy, I noticed the police chief's badge looked a little different tonight. I was wondering if we could address that.
Maybe he would actually come up so that the viewing audience at home could see that. Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Johnson.
By the way, I think it's a very cool community engagement effort.
I do, too. So Chief Foot is currently modeling our pink, our pink police patch. Do you want to tell, Chief, do you want to tell the commission a little bit how we came upon having those patches?
Does this allow me to hand out speeding tickets?
No.
This is for a night.
Yes. So he'll maybe describe how it came to be, but as many of you are aware, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and something that our department wanted to recognize. So Chief, do you want to tell a little bit about how that came to be?
Well, I had an officer that was talking to another agency that they had pink patches, and she asked about us doing something like that. And I had the opportunity to put in for a drawing to have free pink patches made. So I put in for that, and we won. And then it got a morph to, hey, let's wear the patches. So we took these patches and we had Velcro put on the back of them, and then we have Velcro under, these will come off. So we can actually change these out, and another thing we're looking at doing is it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month as well. So I ordered some purple patches to support that cause as well. So it's just a way to maybe for the police department to support some different things in the community.
Thanks, Chief. I know I presented that program to the VA Secretariat Hospital Board as well. They're doing a lot of awareness right now with Breast Cancer Month happening, and I think it's kind of a nice thing because certainly that's touched us all in some kind of way. So appreciate that, and I appreciate the reminder. Wonderful.
Amy, I was going to ask, can you provide a progress update on the school crosswalks and the, if that's underway, if it's near completion?
The flashers?
Yes.
Flashers are installed, I believe, at all locations. I don't know, Adam, if you'll have more to add than I will, but previously, they were manually, manually programmed. Thank you, Mayor. That's why she's the mayor. And so if we were a late start, we actually had someone physically going out and changing them, and now that can be done remotely. I believe all those locations are installed. Is that correct?
Yep, there's, all the locations are installed. There's one that we're waiting on a part for yet that's not in service.
Okay, so we're ready for ice and snow and late starts.
Anything that needs timing adjustment, we can do it from our office.
Does that also include like holidays like today? And so it's not even just bad weather, it's anytime like holidays or anything?
Anytime the timing schedule needs to be adjusted or changed, we can do it remotely from anywhere.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that question, Commissioner Mybaum, and for that update. Obviously, it's important to keep our schoolchildren safe as they're on their way to and from school. Other questions for the city manager or staff?
All right, seeing no other questions, we will move on to public appearances. This is the time and the place for anybody that would like to address the city commission on something not on the agenda tonight. Yes? If you would like to address this, I would ask that you come to the podium, please. And if you wouldn't mind stating your names, we all know who you are, I would appreciate that.
I'm Gary Johnson, and I applied for a variance for a zoning situation at 507 Douglas, and I was informed that it exceeded the existing zoning situation and that we would have to forego that such that zoning change. It involved a 308-square-foot addition for a single garage that would attach to the existing three-car garage, and in doing so, it exceeds the square footage allowed, the 35% by a very minimal amount, but it does exceed it. And so the engineering department said that we would have to forego that. It's such a minimal situation, and we have plenty of room other than that, even though it does exceed the square footage percentage. I would like to ask your help in doing this so we have proper protection for our tenants' vehicles and so as they can get them inside and be protected accordingly. So with that in mind, I believe there was paperwork submitted to your earlier meeting, and we have altered the structure so that according to the previous zoning variance that was submitted by Glenn Mass, sometime back, we will still be have ample square footage, and it's a very nice piece of property. 507 Douglas is second property north of the fire station, and it's well-kept up, maintained, and so on, and we would like to be able to provide our tenants with this one garage addition. So if you would give us some consideration, I'd appreciate it, and we would like to proceed with it if we may.
I'd just like to remind the commission that this is a, a question of a variance is a quasi-judicial matter, so I think that the appropriate time to address this as a group is when it comes before the commission, assuming it has in fact, tonight it comes before the commission? It's on the, so this is the one that's on the agenda? Okay. Gary, you'll have an opportunity to talk to this matter just a little bit later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. This is on the agenda for tonight, so we will be discussing that. So hang around, we'll be getting to that here in a little bit. Anyways, okay. All right, is there anybody else in the public that wants to address the commission? All right, seeing no movement, then we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll read those concurrently. Number one is setting the date of October 24, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. here in the Career Manufacturing Technical Education Academy is our next work session for the city commission, as shared earlier by city manager Leon. The topic will be the strategic plan review. And then number two, as discussed earlier, is the discussion to establish the date and time of the second city commission meeting in December. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right. Moving on to old business, again, as city manager Leon shared earlier today, we will now be moving from being the city commission now into acting as the zoning board of adjustments. So I do want to point that out. That will be the case for the next three agenda items, two under old business and the first one under new business. So with that in mind, is acting as the zoning board of adjustments. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-184, which is a second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance 1065, a rezoning from an I-1 industrial to a B-2 highway business that is for 2000 Summit Street, list construction as applicant. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion, sorry, zoning board of adjustment discussion?
Dave, can you just give us an overview of what their plans are for the site?
So this action, the rezoning and the ordinance associated with it is specific to just the conversion from I-1 industrial to B-2 highway business. So technically, when you're reviewing this specific action, you are considering any possible use that could occur in a B-2 highway business district. You'll see later in the agenda, there's a conditional use permit that gets more specific about development on the site. And that issue is when you start talking specifics, and their plan is to have self-storage and contractor condominiums constructed there in a manner that restricts outdoor storage of materials. So in an I-1 industrial district that it is right now, they would be allowed to have piles of aggregate and raw materials outside. Converting to a B-2 would keep anything like that inside, so the owner is wanting the change so that, you know, the property looks nicer long-term.
And Dave, I do believe in the commission packet it did say this was supported by the planning commission.
Correct, yes. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval of the rezoning request.
Any further questions from the board? Anybody in the public want to address the zoning board? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Excuse me, aye, motion carries. Number two, under old business, is a second reading and a public hearing. The city commission acting as a zoning board of adjustment and consideration of memorandum 22-185, which is a variance from the city's maximum lot coverage in an R4 multiple-family district. As stated earlier, this is 507 and 509 Douglas Avenue. Gary Johnson and Christine Munson owners. Dave, I might have you walk us through this in light of what Mr. Johnson's already shared with us tonight and then the thoughts of the planning commission.
Sure. Mr. Johnson came into our office to request permission to construct an additional garage stall on the garage that exists on that site now. As he has so eloquently said here tonight, it is a very nice, well-kept piece of property, and he's been very cordial in discussing his proposed project with our staff. As a staff, we could not approve it, the permit request, because it would exceed the 35% maximum lot coverage. There was a variance granted which took that percentage up to 36.3% back in 1981. This request would take that coverage up to 38.7%. And while that is a small amount, you know, the number in the ordinance says 35%, so from a staff's perspective, when we see issues like this, if the commission is desirous of a change and the community is desirous of a change, we would recommend considering a change to the ordinance in its entirety so that anybody that owns property zones such as this would have, would be afforded the same opportunity to go to 37% or 39% or 40%. You know, lot coverage comes down to community aesthetics, and 35% seems to have worked pretty well for us through the years, so you end up with a little more green space in areas. Some communities are increasing their development densities, so I would recommend that if the commission wanted to have that discussion, we have that as a part of our comprehensive plan rewrite over the next 18 months here. The other part of this is acting as a zoning board of adjustment in our ordinance and in South Dakota codified law. In order to justify granting a variance, there's supposed to be hardship that's approaching confiscation of the use of property by definition, and the instance specific here, in our opinion, doesn't meet that threshold of a test. It's not confiscating the use of the property to not have additional built, additional structures. The property sits nicely with the structures that are on it. Everything that's on it was previously approved through one process or another. Granting of special privileges is specifically not a reason to grant a variance. The planning commission heard this issue, reviewed it, and recommended that the proposed variance be denied, and their further discussion went on to say that if we want to talk percentages of lot coverage, to also do that during the review of the count plan. Staff is also recommending that this specific zoning variance be denied.
Same with the planning commission, correct? Just not only staff, but the planning commission is also recommended denying this?
Correct, yep. The planning commission voted to recommend that the variance be denied. For the zoning board of adjustment to approve this, one last thing, there's a two-thirds majority threshold for the vote also.
Thank you for that. Question on this, as Mr. Johnson testified earlier or has shared in public appearance that they have altered the structure. Anything in the altered structure that he discusses, does it decrease it? Does it get closer to meeting it? But this altered structure that he's talking about doesn't seem?
So the structures, as they sit right now on the lot, exceed the maximum based on the variance that was granted in 1981, so any additional square footage at all would increase that degree of non-conformity. So even if the exact drawing here doesn't depict Mr. Johnson's latest plans, which I think it does, I think Greg Homestead got the drawing pretty current, but any square footage addition would increase the degree of non-conformity.
Dave, I'd just like to say that I personally am very interested in the conversation, perhaps as part of the comprehensive plan, revisiting that. If this is maybe a good time for us to maybe just find out a little bit more about that, I suppose. You mentioned other communities that have a percentage larger than what we currently have of 35%, but realistically, if we're talking, you know, 36%, 37%, 38%, we're really only talking about maybe an accessory or something. But if we wanted to, say, give current owners who are in R4 zones the opportunity to perhaps expand, to add additional bedrooms, to add an additional residence opportunity, then really, what are we potentially going to be up for? Would we have to go up to 40%, 45%, 50% for it to be, you know, realistically beneficial to not just one or two property owners, but perhaps all property owners?
Yeah, majority of our occupancies that are multiple-family don't come close to the 35% maximum lot coverage. They're typically significantly less than that, so they do have room for certain types of expansion. I don't know that there's a magic number with that percentage. I know that there are a number of communities in trying to improve housing availability, not just in this region, but across the country, that are doing multiple things, either increasing lot coverages, I don't know if that number's 50 or 60%. We'd have to get further into that to talk about it. The other thing you got to do is you got to leave enough room for parking also, so you can start eating up your parking area with structures, and you got to be careful not to do that, which leads me to my next point. Another thing we'll talk about with the count plan process is there are a number of communities across the country right now that are reducing parking requirements also. You know, I don't know if this part of the country is ready for that thought process yet or not, when, you know, but they're talking about promoting other modes of transportation as a part of that discussion. So bicycles and public transportation, all that, which we don't have access to many of those things like they do in some other communities, to the extent that they do anyway. So those will all be parts of that conversation, definitely.
David, my understanding, a lot of these communities are tearing down and rebuilding multifamily complexes to utilize, better utilize the lot setbacks and the percentage. We're not seeing that in our part of the country as much, but in a lot of these bigger urban areas. Based on the facts of the case and the staff and planning commission recommendation, I would move that we deny the request for the variance.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to deny this request. Mr. Johnson, is there anything else that you would like to share with the commission tonight?
have to get further into that to talk about it. The other thing you got to do is you got to leave enough room for parking also, so you can start eating up your parking area with structures, and you got to be careful not to do that, which leads me to my next point. Another thing we'll talk about with the count plan process is there are a number of communities across the country right now that are reducing parking requirements also. You know, I don't know if this part of the country is ready for that, that thought process yet or not, when, you know, but they're talking about promoting other modes of transportation as a part of that discussion. So bicycles and public transportation, all that, which we don't have access to many of those things like they do in some other communities, to the extent that they do anyway. But, so those will all be parts of that conversation, definitely.
David, my understanding, a lot of these communities are tearing down and rebuilding multifamily complexes to utilize, better utilize the lot setbacks and the percentage. We're not seeing that in our part of the country as much, but in a lot of these bigger urban areas.
Based on the facts of the case and the staff and planning commission recommendation, I would move that we deny the request for the variance.
Second. All right, we do have a motion and a second to deny this request. Mr. Johnson, is there anything else that you would like to share with the commission tonight that would aid in that vote? And if so, I would ask you to step to the microphone.
Not really.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny this variance request. Is there any other further commission discussion? Is there anybody in the public that wants to address the commission on this? Seeing no movement, I would ask for roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, I would again remind the commission that you still are acting as the zoning board of adjustments. And number one, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-186 regarding resolution 22-43, a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility on Lot 2 of the address 2000 Summit Street. List construction as applicant. Dave, you want to walk us through this before I ask for motion?
Sure. The owner is proposing to construct a series of buildings on the site. It would be a private development, a private street access to multiple lots where individual property owners could either start their own business, or have a toy shed, basically, or they could actually construct a building and rent it out as a self-storage facility. The owner is not, does not have definitive enough, definitive enough plans at this point to know which building is going to be which type of use. So the request is that the entirety of the site be permitted to have self-storage on it, if that ends up being the case. We're typically a little more picky and ask for a lot more detail when it comes to submittals for this type of request. But those are, these are, types of requests are typically in much closer proximity to residential occupancies. And this one has industrial ground on either side of it. And considering it's, the prerequisite B-2 highway business rezoning was approved a couple agenda items ago, so there won't be outside storage. It'll all be inside. It'll all be buildings that look very similar to the buildings in the neighborhood. Staff's comfortable with the amount of information that we have and allowing the owner some flexibility in phasing their development in a way that, you know, helps him maximize his ability to improve the site. So staff and the planning commission have both, both recommended that the proposal be approved.
Thank you for that, Dave. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. Is there any further discussion on behalf of the board? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion approved. I would now then remind the commission and the public that we are no longer acting as a zoning board of adjustment and are back to city commissioners and a city commission. So with that, number two, under new business, is an introduction and first reading of consideration of memorandum 22-187, which is a first reading and to establish October 24th, 2022 is the date for a public hearing to consider ordinance 1066 and extraterrestrial zoning jurisdiction, rezoning from an ETJ A1 agricultural to an ETJB2 highway business. This is the address, the north side of the 1500 block of Whiting Drive. Justice and Michelle Hirschman owners. Can I get an introduction?
Introduce.
Thank you. Number three, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-183 and resolution 22-46 regarding the proposed 2023 rate of adjustment for the Huether Family Aquatics Center. Before I ask for your pleasure, I would ask City Manager Leon or Director of Parks and Rec to walk us through the proposal.
Sure, I'll start out, and if you have more detailed questions, Todd is here. We're proposing rate adjustments for 2023 for the Huether Family Aquatics Center. Season pass only rate adjustment from $62, which is currently, to $64. In 2022, we did sell eight fewer season passes than in 2021, and daily passes also fell in 2021 from 20,957 to 13,687 this year. We were open fewer days this year due to some weather-related activities, so that's to keep in mind. But we do think that the daily rate is still valid and still probably a good one to stick at, which is $10. So we're not recommending a rate change there. The reason we come before you this evening with a rate change is we like to advertise the Huether Family Aquatics Center as something that is a good stocking stuffer, I guess, for a season pass, and we like to talk about it early enough so people can plan to do that. So like we did last year, we would sell these passes at the 2022 rate until January 1st, so you still could get your season pass at its current rate. You can see there some of the data from our financial system of expenses and operations. Everyone can appreciate, of course, that the increase in costs that we have to operate the facility to do to utilities and labor and just the cost of all our goods that we utilize at the Aquatics Center. And we also recognize that inflation has impacted the users as well. But we certainly want to do our best with this facility to continue to keep up as best we can with expenses. And so there's, those are the reasons for the rate increase proposal for, again, season passes only beginning the first of the year next year. The commission and public should be aware that we still do have the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club for passes for folks that, you know, are struggling or maybe cannot afford that. And they weigh that out based on what they know personally about the families.
Thank you for walking us through that. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this agenda item?
I would just like to say, I still am amazed at the scope of the project, the undertaking of building, the aquatics facility, and the number of variables, you know, when it comes to concessions and how many people, and this, that, and the other thing. Two years into this, we're making very minor adjustments. And I just think that speaks really highly of the way staff approached the entire thing to see how to keep it up and running. I also appreciate that we have the opportunity to evaluate it every year as we try to stabilize and make it a splashing success for the community.
Pun fully intended. Yes. Any other commission discussion?
So in the agenda item, it says that we sold eight less season passes than in 2021. How many exactly did we still sell in 2022?
We'll have to pause for a technical question here. I bet Todd has it?
3,000, I don't think so.
In 2022, we sold 3,961. In 2021, we sold 3,969.
So then the hope is, I suppose, that we're going to make a little bit more in revenue, projecting that things may stay about the same as they did year over year, that we'd get as many season ticket sales coming up here in 2023, and then also through the Christmas season. But the dollar amount that we're actually, then, if we're just going to assume we're going to be selling as much, that's only a few thousand dollars more.
Yeah, the, I think we've shown that there's value in our season passes. So seeing those numbers stay the same year to year was great this year. Daily passes, weather was a little bit of a factor this summer. We saw our season pass use go down from 45,895 check-ins to 41,251. So we had about 4,000 less check-ins off of those season passes. But when you see daily passes go from 29,57 to 13,687, weather is a part of that. But probably the inflation budgetary economy discussions through the summer, probably, I would say, those that were going to buy season passes, were going to buy season passes, budget for it, maybe not live in paycheck to paycheck on daily passes. Those, some of those people are probably living paycheck to paycheck and made the decision not to come to the swimming pool and use their, because they don't have discretionary income, or if they do, they're using it for food, rent, gas, heat, utilities, things like that. So some of those play, play into factor two, probably.
Yeah, so I guess I would just be curious, then, we would definitely want, though, like concession revenues, we want them to increase. So that's kind of troubling to see them decreasing. But there's quite a bit of money to be made with just a small uptick in revenue at the concession stand. So I'm wondering about the daily rate, where we went from $8 to $10, and to see such a significant decline. If we're, if we're missing out on an opportunity there, I suppose, even if it is promotional opportunities coming up here next year, given the number of tournaments that happen throughout the summer season, for instance, I'm just trying to think of ways to get more people in outside of the folks who it looks like are pretty good about continuing with season passes. And I assume that's a pretty, pretty high rate of people who, year over year, bought season passes, that it's probably 80, 90% at least?
Yeah, yeah, similar, the name stayed pretty similar on selling of the season passes. Yeah. Daily passes, now, we've got a couple years' data. Like you said, we can start to look at days and times when we're slower, if we want to get into that situation where you would think of like Wild Water West, they have an evening rate for after 5:00 and things like that. Thinking of the golf model through the years, as you get later into the season, they'll sell a season pass for half price. Again, just thinking about people discretionary income, what fits into budgets and those type of things. But then we've, again, when we first started looking at operations, we talked about hotel stay-and-play packages. Do you try to work with the hotels? What kind of discount do you give? Tournaments in town, baseball, softball, could look at doing some of those type of things. Again, I don't know that the baseball, softball groups would have money to buy passes from us and give. So that'd be a matter of how do you advertise the discount rate? Do you give them a coupon? Some of those type of things, so, yeah.
Well, I would, and again, I would just assume that there's a big opportunity with those folks in particular. There's probably plenty others. But literally everything that you just said, I'm, I'm all on board for, because I think, most importantly, we want to make sure that we get as many kids, as many families, back into the pool year over year. So it's troubling to see that the drop in day passes was pretty darn significant. But there again, we just need to get more people in. So if that's ultimately what we should be trying to help solve here, not so much that we get potentially, you know, 6,000 to 10,000 in additional revenue by upping the season passes, I certainly hope that we get the opportunity to entertain an agenda item where we can either throw more funds that way, or I guess formalize a relationship with the handful of groups that you mentioned, and see if we can, if anything, get a lot more people back into the pool year over year.
Other commission discussion?
One of the things that I want to bring up, I just want to make sure that with the GUBBY program through the Boys and Girls Club, that people know exactly how to take advantage of that program if they need it. I don't know if the drop was because people were feeling the pinch, but I just want to make sure that people know how to get, or at least how to, whether it's through the internet or stopping in themselves, but just to make sure that they for sure have access and know how to access that program.
Yeah, we intend to continue to work with them, and also not just tell people about how they can access it, but how they can give to that fund as well, if people want to, because we're never going to run out in need for folks that just, no matter what the rate is, it's just not doable. So we want to continue to work with those folks as well. And I would add to that, one of the things we can do now that we know we can operate the facility is start looking at programming and making tweaks and changes, and maybe add value to, and add some things that folks are asking for that we haven't been sure we can be successful at. So, you know, somebody that is maybe not interested in the age group, whether they're interested in swimming necessarily, but the daytime hours don't work for water walking, to offer some, some ability to do some things like that. So Todd and Luke Yeomans are working on some of those types of things, and hopefully people will see more value in whichever type of pass they, they buy. But I think if we see changes in utility costs like we saw this year, we'll kind of continually be behind the game, but we also have to be reasonable, I think, about what we do when we adjust rates.
Anybody else in the commission? Comments, thoughts? Anybody in the public? Yes. If you could, please state your name.
All right, my name is Mark Conrad. In 2017, our family used to use the swimming pool, and our family rate was $100 per year, which was actually very nice. I have six children. So if I was to go with the current rate this next year, I will pay $512 just so that my family can go swimming. We don't normally have everybody go at once. It's usually maybe just four of us go at a time. So it's not like we have this large family spending a lot of money. But I would like to actually suggest that we do not raise the rate, because what I, what I see is, as the rate goes up, less people use the facilities. I also have two of my children live in town with their families. They have a total of six people per, per family. That would basically cost them 384 a year per family. Last year, we spent the 512, the 384, and the 384, just as a Christmas present, so that my, my, my children and their kid, their, my grandkids could all do it. But one of the families said, "Don't do it to us this year." So they're going to be missing out because they can't afford that. And maybe if there would be some way to come up with a family rate again, I realize 100 is probably too small, but maybe 212 or something like that. That way a family rate could still be available. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
No.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
No.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-182 in resolution 22-45 regarding the rate adjustment for the Summit Activity Center. Again, would ask City Manager Leon to walk us through this before we talk about a motion.
And I'll ask Todd to stay up there as well. So in August, you remember that we got a lot of comments about the Summit Activity Center at public meetings, and we got some emails and phone calls, and we've utilized that input to make some changes and to return some operations that were in place prior to the pandemic. So that's what's before you tonight. We recently expanded some weekend hours that started the first of the month. So closing times, Saturdays and Sundays will be adjusted from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We have been working on the cleaning and maintenance and painting of the former Yankton College space, and so we're going to use that area as dedicated space for fitness classes. That's an area that, as of 2024, I believe, is no longer needed by Yankton College, and they're currently vacated. So we need to negotiate the long-term use of that with the Yankton School District. But they're amenable to allowing us to use that for dedicated fitness programs, which has been a request. Some folks, when they're doing fitness classes, don't like to be sort of on display, so to speak, and out in the open, and we can understand that. Open swims on Saturdays, Sunday, Monday evenings, and Wednesday evenings began October 1st. The no-school special open swims that are on weekdays when there won't be no The no-school special open swims that are on weekdays, when there won't be no YSD classes, will also be planned this winter, and we're also looking at some additional water-based fitness programming, knowing that, as we heard from the public, the aquatics part of the Summit Activity Center is something that we don't have competition with in, in our community, indoors, in the same, in the same regard, same size of facility, et cetera. Pickleball is, continues to be in great demand, and so we will be taping down pickleball lines on the north courts and the auxiliary gym, which is the gym that we have, the court that we have access to. In the coming months, those courts are going to be available when City Hall is not. So, you know, in the more early wee morning hours, before eight A.M., and in the evenings, after City Hall is closed, and on weekends, during times when City Hall Gym is not open, folks can come and play pickleball. Those people would either need to be a member of the Summit Activity Center, or look into a day pass, or have that Great Life membership. City Hall Gym would still be available to rent for, if pickleball courts wanted to play at that location when we are not open, so that has happened before as well with the pickleballing. We also heard that a lot about making the facility more friendly to, to families, and that's important, and so we are adding a youth rate to encourage folks to get involved, and then children under three years would continue to be free of charge at the SAC. We also heard a lot from patrons at the SAC that we've had some issues with middle school-age kids unsupervised, using weight and fitness equipment upstairs unsafely, and adults who are not related to these kids being concerned that somebody was going to get hurt. So we've tried to make the facility more safe for everyone, but also answer that concern by changing a policy that requires middle school-age kids that are eleven, twelve, and thirteen, eleven to, eleven to fourteen, basically, that they need to be supervised by an adult who will be working out with them to avoid injury, and, and also to help them use the equipment properly, and get those safe exercise habits down. So that's part of the changes. We also are requesting that the commission go back to, closer to what our pre-pandemic rates were, since we've readjusted here in, in what we're offering. So you can read all those in your packet. The current twenty-dollar-a-month adult individual rate would be adjusted to thirty. Adult individual membership fee from two hundred would be adjusted to three thirty, and there's some with the youth rate being ten dollars a month, et cetera, as you go down the line there in your packet. That's not to say that's what, what the rates will end up permanently, we'll, I'll talk in a second here about having some input from this community group that's going to help us walk through that, but for the time being, moving back to closer to those pre-pandemic rates and services. The current adult individual day rate is at seven dollars, and I think that is slated to stay the same, is that correct, Todd? Yeah. So that's slated to say that, stay the same. If approved by you tonight, those new rates, which are kind of old rates, but pre-pandemic rates, would can, would be effective here the first of next month. We do want to keep customer service at a high level, and we want to get input from folks. So we have had a number of people, as you remember earlier in the fall, say they wanted to be involved. We put a letter in the utility bill, so we're still getting people saying they're interested. So once we have all that roster, all those rosters of people, we'll, we'll select, we'll probably, as we do with most committees, give them to the mayor and, and go through, trying to get a diverse group with different talents and interests to serve on that, and talk about what programming might need to be looked at, type of equipment might need to be looked at, hours, rates. So, so we'll be coming before you again, likely, with their input and recommendations, but for the time being, we heard these were immediate things that needed to be looked at and addressed. So we can answer questions if you'd like, or, you know, also hear what input you have as well for the SAC.
Thank you for walking us through that. With that understanding, what is the commission? Pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion or questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So there used to be a family membership, did you say that, is that just gone now? Because I don't see that on here, or did, did you, did I miss that?
Yep, similar to what we're doing at the Heather Family Aquatic, everybody has their own pass.
Okay, so we, we've eliminated that, what was that rate before, the family membership?
The family membership must have been a couple of years ago, or more.
Yeah, well, he's looking, I'll just say, you know, one of the things we've tried to do at facilities is streamline, first of all, not make the rates confusing, which they've got, they've gotten to be, as we had at one point, you know, senior rates, family rates, individual rates, couples rates, corporate rates, we've tried to make that a little more streamlined. But also, there's a question oftentimes about who's a family, what's a family, and that, you know, are they people that live in their house, are they people you're related to? That became unclear, and then we had a, we've had both at the Aquatic Center and, and SAC and sort of equity issue of, you know, I've got two people in my family, but, or two kids, somebody's got six, and we're paying the same rate, that's not fair, type discussion. So, so we did, that's why we have tried to streamline the rate, but Todd, did you locate it?
Yeah, annual in two thousand nineteen for family was five hundred and seventy-six.
Is there a guesstimate that's been thrown out with these rate changes? What added revenue we might be able to expect?
No, I don't think we have a, an estimate yet, you know, as we, what we're talking here, when we add fitness classes and add hours, we're also adding expense, so we might make that up with, with rates. We might, we might go backwards as well, but, you know, the hope is that the more we offer, the more attractive the facility is to people, and the more use that they want to, to have, and as we get input from the community members, if they have ideas that we want to try to implement, and the commission thinks this is appropriate, that will drive people to, to the SAC, we'll incorporate those, so we, we don't have an estimate.
It's, so I see those very differently, I know they're related, but the expense side, not so much concerned about that, I suppose, but on the revenue side, we're not talking about an additional hundred thousand dollars year over year, just with these changes. This is probably maybe more in the eight to ten thousand dollars a year?
To gain, for, of revenue?
Of an added revenue, given this new structure.
I don't think it will be a hundred thousand, I don't, I would like it to be, but that'd be a lot of, a lot of folks, so I don't think it'll be a hundred thousand.
Other questions from the commission? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? Yes, sir, step to the podium.
Mark Conrad, since this is similar to the Aquatic Center, I figure I'll speak on this one as well. I'm remembering about three years ago, we were paying sixteen dollars a month for a individual to use the, the SAC, and I remember, I did not do it for the first couple of months, but my wife and kids did, and then I finally did it the third month, and two of my kids decided not to, so it was kind of a month-to-month thing. And that worked out really good, but going from sixteen to twenty dollars, now to thirty, I can't imagine any of my children wanting to do this now, so I don't think they're going to take part in it this year. The other thing, too, is back in two thousand seventeen, when there were, was lightning or thunder at the swimming pool, I remember a couple of times being able to go to the, to the SAC and going swimming indoors, and not having to worry about lightning, but we no longer have that option to be a member of the Aquatic Center and also be able to use the pool. So I guess I'm suggesting not to raise the rate, and also to consider allowing people who have the Aquatic Center membership to also be able to use the SAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? And anybody on the commission?
I just want to add, I, I guess I, I really appreciate the effort that the committee has already put towards this, and to be honest, I'm, I'm surprised we've already seen this as an agenda item, and I think that actually says a lot about folks' excitement to put some changes in place, but at the same time, I'm not sure it's useful at this point in time to, to do that, just given that there are so many active folks who came to the city commission, you know, to express their concerns, and I just wonder if it would be worthwhile, unless we, you know, unless this was something that was already talked about within the committee, that why can't we just literally, you know, email out a survey to the existing Summit Activity Centers members, to ask them, here's what's being proposed, here's a calculator to figure out how it might impact you or your family, and what their thoughts are? Only because I, I would be very curious to understand maybe a little bit better what the implications might be, because I, what I don't want to see is fewer people using the Summit Activity Center. I'm, I'm optimistic that wouldn't be the case, even if this were to pass here tonight, but it's a, it's a concern I have, and I just wonder if this might be a missed opportunity to, first of all, just essentially poll all of our existing Summit Activity Center members, and, and ask them what their level of interest would be, because I know there's a lot of people who are interested in, in seeing the Summit Activity Center continue, but I'm not sure at what cost.
That, that's certainly an option, Commissioner Mybaum, and these are all comments and information based on what we gathered from, like I said, the emails and, and public input here that we took at the meeting. One of the things that we intended to do is to, as the committee is being selected, survey members, so that the committee had something to react to. We thought these were minor enough changes, I guess, in the sense that these were kind of going back to where we were, and adding things that we heard were immediate needs, more hours, more programming, more on the schedule, et cetera, to try to be as reactive to, to the public input as possible, but certainly you can vote no, and we can go through that process, just take a little longer to see some attention and, and changes to the Summit Activity Center. I think these are introductory changes, certainly, if, and not final, so if the commission wants to wait, we certainly can do that. By the time, I think, that we get a committee together and have some substantial discussion, and get some information from members, some more time is going to pass, and so. I had the similar discussion with Todd about, are we ready to do this? And he and his staff talked to me about, you know, we want to, we want to show that we're listening to the community and following through on what they asked us to do, and I think that's why it's before you this evening, but certainly, if you don't want to move forward, we'll continue on as we are, and we have adjusted the hours already with swimming and weekend hours, but we can revert that as well, if that's your direction.
So what's proposed tonight, the adult individual rate is still less than it was before we lowered rates during the pandemic, correct?
So we were, in two thousand nineteen...
Where must she go now? Because I'm just seeing, prior to the pandemic changes in two thousand twenty, the SAC individual rate was three forty-eight for an annual individual membership. Tonight, we're proposing to go to three thirty, so we're still less than where we were before, at least in some of these rates.
Yes, yep, yep, so the single rate, whether you say a month, an annual at three forty-eight, or monthly, we were at, I think we were at twenty, twenty-nine, we were about, I think we were at twenty-nine per month for an individual in two thousand nineteen. Rates dropped because fitness class, once pandemic hit, fitness classes stopped, we closed the swimming pool, didn't have open swims, no fitness classes, slowly opened back up with the weightlifting cardio upstairs, and then limited the numbers that could be inside the building, no gymnasium space, and then through time, as the school then opened back up, then we were, we started doing open swims, picked up some gym space finally last year again. So operation-wise now, in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, it looks like it did at the pandemic level, so we're adding fitness classes. As was mentioned, we have access to the gym, we now have the space, the Yankton College space for our fitness classes, which we didn't have when they, Yankton College staff was still there, so that allows us to get fitness classes out of our meeting rooms and out of the upstairs area, sometimes where we lose space, things can get too crowded, depending on numbers, so we have a dedicated space, which is a new, different item that we have. But open swims, swim lessons, fitness classes, gymnasium space, all that is back to, to where we were pre-pandemic.
Yeah, so I just see this as returning pretty much to where we were before the pandemic, and then we'll start visiting with the committee and implementing more changes, and see where that goes.
Excuse me, I'd agree, this is our baseline back where we were. I was against raising rates at the pool, because I felt like two dollars wasn't a significant enough change to really, other than tell people, hey, everything's going up in price, inflation, all those things, this is just getting back to the baseline we already had. So in my mind, this is different than the pool vote.
Anybody in the public? The motion before you is to approve the rates as proposed in the agenda packet that has been motioned and seconded. Roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number five, under new businesses, consideration of memorandum twenty-two dash one eighty-one in resolution twenty-two dash forty-four, regarding the rental rate increase for the Summit Activity Center. Again, I would ask City Manager Leon to walk us through the semantics.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, and Todd for staying up at the podium so long. The City School Committee met back in two thousand fourteen to really wrap our arms around rental rates. These are for the Summit Activity Center rentals for things such as dance recitals and choir concerts, and things of that nature that are community rentals. We evaluated the costs of, of, of the events and the staff to help put them on, and the additional labor, we also compared with other private and public events spaces, and we jointly decided that we needed to continue with rates to reflect who we compete with in terms of people renting space, and also wanted to make sure that we were informing the public ahead of time, well afar in advance, because we know a lot of these groups operate off of fundraising and membership fees, and so we want to give them a heads up as to what ongoing fees will be to rent facilities, et cetera. So the school district, as a policy, has just adopted the increased rental rates for the future years, and I spoke with Dr. Kendall, and, because this was coming before you tonight, and so what we're doing...
And so what we're doing is proposing that you consider the adjusted rates here, which I'm getting my computer to tell me what they are. Slowly. Okay, so you can see the rate change for each of the spaces. These would be for effective July 1, 2024, since the ones for 2023 are already accepted. So you can see there's a four-hour, half-day charge and a full-day charge. So main gym, for example, for the full day would go to 347, auxiliary gym, 317, commons area, 249, theater, 347, Yankton College area, 249, education classroom, 249, hallways and lockers, additional fees there. And so there are additional fees when folks want to use sound or lighting, et cetera. So you can see those schedules as well. There's also a premium schedule. So premium dates are holiday dates. So you know, even when there's a holiday, somebody has to work. And oftentimes, that's an increased labor associated with those activities because sometimes those employees are subject to overtime pay or holiday pay. And also, it's more difficult to identify people to put those things on, et cetera. So there is a premium rate that's in the schedule as well there. So you can see that that changes what the expenses are, increases them during those time periods. So we put these before you each year to consider, just so we keep them in front of you and the public's eye, and they understand. But we have committed in a previous committee with the school that we continue to work together to keep the rates competitive and to cover the costs of renting the facility and our staffs that are working in the facilities.
Thank you for walking us through that. And I believe in the commission packet, that increase, as stated, is a 3% increase.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Yep. With that understanding, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion?
So if the space, say the auxiliary gym, the north auxiliary gym is rented, not rented, is used by the Yankton High School for a basketball game versus allowing the facility to be used by the Summit Activity Center for open gym, do they pay that rate? Or is that?
No.
Because that was an issue that's come up, is that the gym space is at a premium already, and then it's always taken.
Correct. So Todd.
It's a whole other discussion.
It is, and Todd, you might have to help me, but there is provisions for the school to priority access on the courts for the basketball season, correct?
Yeah, are you talking the auxiliary gym specifically or overall facility?
The auxiliary gym, in this case.
Auxiliary gym, school has first priority use for the, all three auxiliary gyms, from the beginning of the basketball season to the end of the basketball season. Any other time, and so that would be after school for practices. Anytime there's doubleheader scheduled games for basketball, they will also use the entire auxiliary gym. Volleyball matches, depending on number of teams that are coming, and I don't mean different towns, depending on if there's freshmen, sophomore, and again, don't quote me on all the different levels of volleyball, but volleyball has started now to need the auxiliary gym, so then we wouldn't have the one court. But no, they don't pay any rental space, they don't pay any rental fees, obviously they're co-owner of the facility.
Yes, I was a little more tongue-in-cheek, I guess, because I feel, you know, we're trying to cover our costs, and that space is always used, it seems, during especially the time of year that people want to use the gym space. It just, if we're trying to offer these great services at the Summit Center, increase our costs, increase our offerings, but yet it doesn't, there's just a disconnect there. And I think we all understand that.
So Todd, what happens? So if I rent a gym, I'm guaranteed that gym, correct? Like if I go through all the planning and have that gym ready?
No, you wouldn't be guaranteed it. A school's always got right of first refusal. So if you rented a theater, main gym, auxiliary gym, if they have a snow out, something happens and they need to reschedule, your rental gets kicked. School always has right of first refusal throughout the facility.
So then I would just be out?
You would have to reschedule.
Okay.
Does the same go from the city's perspective, since we're co-owners in this, that we have?
If, if we wanted to schedule an event over top of a rental that was already scheduled, yes, we could, because we own the facility. So yes, we could do that. We normally would not do that.
How big is the Yankton College former space compared to the space that we're in here now?
Very similar. I've got the.
And as co-owners, we could actually have city commission meetings there for free if we wanted to?
It'd be too small to have a city commission meeting.
We don't have any, we would have to work out an agreement with the school right now that's, neither of us really have use of that space. We have, that's going to be something we're negotiating with for the time being. You know, Dr. Kendall has said it's not being used, so use it for your fitness classes. If we were going to set up a permanent meeting room space and technology and things like that, we would need, I think that would be when we'd want to negotiate it. And I don't know if they'd, you know, if it would be a cost back to them, or if they would be amenable to just letting us use it, or, you know.
Well, we don't own this space that we're in.
Correct.
We actually pay more to the school district than we did three years ago when we actually were owners of this building.
We pay rent to the school for the use of the space.
Other question?
I'm in favor of the increase, our doing this. I just, I think there's a much larger discussion, as we all know.
Other commission discussion?
I just have a comment that I am fascinated by the fact that you can rent a locker for $63 in the history.
Not a locker, you get the locker room.
Oh, it's the locker room?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was like a locker down by the theater. I was going to say that would come in handy sometimes.
No, I don't believe, no, 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 no. No, the lockers out in the hallway are the students. No, no, this is a locker room, locker room.
The whole locker room?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
The commission discussion. Anybody in the public want to address the commission? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-188 regarding the bid acceptance for the Airport Acres project. This is for grading and storm sewer, sorry, grading and storm sewer project. Three bids received. Firma Construction had the lowest bid at $129,856.75, which is $8,485.75 below the engineer's estimate. City staff is recommending moving forward with Firma Construction. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-180 regarding special assessment abatement write-offs. That is in the amount of $63,795.49. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-163 recommending approval of the contract for group health insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance for city employees. I would turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through the basics.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. I'll give you the overview, and I will then let Brittany Orr get into the details. So we have a health insurance committee, which is established to talk about review health insurance proposals. We've recently expanded that committee because as we've incorporated the Fraternal Order of Police, we wanted the bargaining members of the FOP as well as the AFSMI to be even on the committee. So that committee includes Dwayne Johnson, Brad Bees, Todd Larson as non-CBA represented employees, Shane Bush, Dwayne Shantz, and Amanda Schaefer as AFSMI represented employees, and Jen Keitel, Kaitlyn Schindler and Brooke Hansen as FOP represented committee members. So they did go out and ask for quotes. I think part of what is interesting this year is I think even the health insurance providers are a little unknown and uncertain about costs, both the costs that we incurred and the costs that are going to be incurred based on what we're seeing in healthcare. So initially, we were locked in at a rate with Avera Health Plans at 10%. And we were able to get that locked in rate for 2023 because we had a certain percentage of our employees utilize the health screening tool that Avera put together for us, very beneficial, and we appreciate the incentives that you gave employees to do that. We were excited about a 10% increase, and that's what we were working off of until last week when we heard from Avera Health Plans that, in fact, it was going to be more like a 5%, depending upon which plan employees selected. So that's really exciting news. Brittany will walk through the different increases with you. Also, just to bring forward that one of the things that's been a real, really important to all of our employees, to many of our employees, is a way that the health insurance costs can be more attractive for family members. So the city benefit package is a strong one. However, our family benefit, our family medical coverage tends not to be as good as some others or as affordable. So there is a third dimension here, I guess, this year. So if approved, employees will have a third option, another high deductible HSA that they can choose from if they so wish. So I'll let Brittany kind of go through the plans as well. And then also within, you have dental, vision, and the life insurance. Now, the only business of the health insurance committee is to look at the health insurance coverage. However, I asked them to take a look at all of them this year, especially because not necessarily knowing what the rates were going to be, if we had to make some tough choices, wanted to have their input. So Brittany, I'll let you talk about the different plans, and then we can answer questions if the commission has them.
So the health insurance committee asked for similar plans as what we've had in the past. Avera, obviously, for the quote, but also asked for Wellmark to provide, just to make sure that they weren't lower than what the 10% rate cap was going to be for the Avera Health Plans. Which you can see in your memo, the Wellmark was well above 20% increase. So we were pleased with the under 10%. And then now, the overall total increase, premium increase, came back at 5.37. That's a 6.9% increase for the traditional $1,000 deductible and a 4% increase for the lower-level, high deductible HSA. One change for that plan is that due to the IRS changing their minimum requirement, or their minimum, their requirements for a minimum deductible for a high deductible plan, that changed from $2,800 to a $3,000. So the committee all felt like that was, obviously, to be compliant with the IRS was a necessary change, and then the quotes collected for the $5,000 HSA. Giving, as Amy mentioned, what we heard a lot from committee gathering information from other employees was something that looked a little more affordable to families. As we are trying to recruit some, that was something that we heard a lot in feedback that we had received. So that's where the $5,000, we had some options for some higher, even higher, HSA, but the committee didn't feel like that was probably a direction that we wanted to go in. The commission should be reminded that the city does put contributions to the HSA to account for the difference in premiums from their traditional to the HSA. So as the deductible goes up, those contributions look a little bit, get a little bit greater for those into the employees' HSA account. And then the employees obviously have their amounts that they can put in up to certain restrictions that are set for us. And again, then now for vision and dental, the feedback has been good with the carriers that we have, so we asked them to quote. Both came back kind of comparable to what Midwest Benefits was seeing from other communities. So the dental came back 4.9%, which they felt was very competitive. So the health insurance committee has recommended to keep the same carrier for vision and dental moving forward into 2023.
All right. Any questions for City Manager Leon or for Brittany? If not, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations of the health committee. Any further commission discussion?
Can you quantify for me how many of our employees, or what percent of our employees take advantage of the high deductible health plan?
Yes, so.
And I guess the HSA as well?
Yeah, so for currently, for the traditional $1,000 deductible, we have 74 employees, four employee plus one, six families. For the high $2,800 this year, HSA, we have 42 employee, we have one employee plus one, and we have six families.
We think the numbers will shift a little bit. Commissioner Mybaum offering this third HSA plan.
How many years have you been offering the high deductible plan?
I want to say three or four.
Three or four was what I was going to say.
Four. Todd has, Todd's been with us on the health committee for a while, so I think four.
It sounds good. That's actually probably the perfect timing for doing an additional higher deductible plan, because people have had time to also build up their HSAs to make that shift. So you might see even a bigger shift than you expect.
Yeah, and that was a lot of feedback that we heard, was they already have that cushion, so now they can move there, knowing that they have that cushion in their account, and then have, you know, realize the lower premium.
You heard it from an expert. That makes me feel good, that we have human resources person saying, another one saying we're doing the right thing. But, you know, I think our employees are aware of, you know, those things too, and they see them and want to, and we try to be responsive to that. You know, these things have to be, you know, negotiated. So it is in both of the, both of the contracts that we will have the input from the committee.
And that includes the percent that the city contributes into the HSA as well?
That they, we have to negotiate that rate? No.
Oh, it isn't?
It's not. We try, the intention is to try to make the value equal for each employee regardless of what they, which plan they select. Other questions from the commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
I'm an employee of Avera Health, so I'm going to abstain.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
I will also abstain. I have a husband who works for the city, but I do believe with that. Motion carries? Correct, all right. Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-189 and resolution 22-47 regarding a radio purchase for the Yankton Police Department. Just reminding the com-
Just reminding the commission, this was an agenda item budgeted at forty-five thousand to purchase and replace mobile radios. They did apply for and receive a grant from Homeland Security in the amount of forty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and thirteen cents. Should this be approved tonight, the cost to the city will be eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents, once the grant is reimbursed into the budget. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a double motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
Nice work on the grant.
Chief, we encourage you to keep your day job, but, you know, you're getting a lot of grants and patches and stuff lately, so good job, keep it up. All of that definitely helps offset the budget, for sure. Other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. All right, number ten under new business is consideration of memorandum twenty-two dash one ninety and resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight regarding the authorization for a construction manager at risk. This was discussed in our last work session. Due to inflation and the short timeline for construction, this would allow for better project cost management and budgeting. Kyle, anything before I ask for the pleasure of the city commission, you or City Manager Leon want to add to anything gleaned after the work session, or anything that you think would impact making a motion tonight?
We do have a couple of updates, kind of. I'll even call one kind of a correction on some of the pricing. First, we did meet with a owner's rep consultant. We had a very good meeting with the consultant. Through the discussion, we feel pretty comfortable where we're at, but we do think there's a few things that the consultant could bring to the table. We would like to build a relationship with this consultant, not only for this project, but for future projects. We're very impressed with them. For that, we're looking at a smaller contract, an hourly contract with a price not to exceed. We also did have a good discussion with him about some attorneys out there that specialize in construction-type contracts and C-MAR contract specifics. So we'll be looking at those two things. One of the biggest things to do is probably have them review our first design contract for our engineer, so that kind of moves that timeline up for that owner's rep and attorney. So we'll be seeing those, if this resolution sign is approved, seeing those fairly quickly. And the other thing that we did some more research on was that C-MAR design phase cost. There's a lot of fluctuation in that cost. So if you look at the Sturgis project that was done here a couple of years ago, I think it was their water plant, that design phase for that contract was actually about one percent is all. But that was a different time. Talking with that contractor, they came in that low, one, it was going to be their first C-MAR project in the state of South Dakota, so they were really hungry for that. The other side of that is the market was much different at that time, so they were really looking to get into that guaranteed maximum price contract. So they came in really low on the design side. Chances are, we're not going to see that again. I think I quoted ten percent at the work session, which I actually think is a little bit high. The other thing that works into that design phase contract is really the number of meetings and reviews that they have to do. So that price goes up a little bit when you look at retrofit rehab, because there's a few more reviews and meetings you need to have versus new construction. So I think realistically, we're probably close to that five percent and then ten percent. So I wanted to clarify that. And then the other thing you see is when you look at these past projects, you'll see an amended design contract. And when you look at that amended contract, that's really the procurement, early procurement of equipment and work packages. So once you have that C-MAR onboard, the C-MAR does all the purchasing. So any of that purchasing's done ahead of that guaranteed maximum price, those expenditures need to be approved by the governing body. So those will come to you as an amendment to the design phase with the C-MAR. Those packages come after the guaranteed maximum price. Again, those are done under that guaranteed maximum price contract, so those packages won't come before you. But again, the ones ahead of the guaranteed maximum price will come as an amendment to that design phase. So you'll see a lot of those phases, you'll see an amended design phase for those final costs. So that's kind of where we're at, so we just want to kind of clarify that. Otherwise, if there's any questions on the resolution, Ross and I would both be happy to.
Thank you for clarifying that, Kyle. There's no other further discussion from the commission. Before making a motion, I would ask what your pleasure is.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
If we go the route of having an owner's rep involved, that's somebody who would be boots-on-the-ground, not like virtual for the entirety of their services.
Based on the conversation we have with them, they do get into that construction management phase of it. They were pretty confident, the owner's rep was confident that we have a pretty good handle on that. So we'd be looking at much, actually, more of just a contract review, that initial contract review with the engineer, contract review with the C-MAR contract, and potentially a couple of reviews of those first work packages we do to make sure that we have our language and documentation correct in those work packages. So it probably would not be onsite project management type work.
Gotcha. And that's, I was just, you know, having gone through long virtual sessions before over, you know, complicated language, that can be pretty challenging compared to everybody being all in the same room and hashing it all out.
This individual would be more than willing to come onsite if needed. We just don't see a lot of that. Again, that's why we're looking at that hourly rate, probably not to exceed roughly that ten thousand dollar.
We met with them last week virtually, Ross and I and Lisa, and Adam and Kyle, and he seemed to be, have an affinity for South Dakota, and he takes all the South Dakota work, because he likes South Dakota, so he'd be happy to come here if we should want him to, or he may even want to himself. So he was, City of Watertown used him on a project and a couple of other cities as well, so he likes the state, and I think he's from South Dakota originally, so I think we certainly could have him here.
Other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. We are now under other business on the agenda, and there is no other business in front of the city commission tonight. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personal matters under SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining, meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.